The August 13th, 2024 meeting of the St. Joseph County Council is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Fig, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our God and our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We thank you for salvation that we have in Christ. We thank you how you take care of us and watch over us. I ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight, all we have to say and do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is any petitions, communications, or miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion on the minutes, please?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the July minutes. Any further council discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The July minutes are approved. Next is St. Joseph County Council Board Appointments. We have none this month. Next up is a report from the county auditor, and we are going to move this to the end under new business, because this was going to be presented by Mr. Dalton, our financial analyst. Unfortunately, Mr. Dalton is stuck on traffic on I-94 and can't get here until a little later in the evening, so we are going to move item number six until new business. Number seven, report from county commissioners?
No report.
Thank you, President Baxmeyer. Eight, any report from any council special committee? Hearing none, we'll move to first readings. Clerk, will you please read our first bill?
Bill number 80-24, an ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by CS Realty Ventures LLC for property being located at 55801 Evergreen Plaza Drive and 12961 McKinley Highway, Penn Township. Petitioner, CS Realty Ventures LLC.
Bill number 80-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill number 81-24, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended, for property located at 11810 Douglas Road, 54050 Buckeye Road, 11603 Douglas Road, and 11501 Douglas Road, from a agricultural district to our single-family district. Petitioner, Victor Kubachek, life estate for Sandra Schmidt.
Bill number 81-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill number 82-24, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154, Land Usage of St. Joseph County Code, Section 154 dot 515, to revise development standards for large-scale solar energy systems, SES, renewable energy systems. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Council.
Bill number 82-24 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes our first readings tonight. Next up is resolutions. Clerk, will you please read the resolution?
Bill number 86-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council recognizing the Honorable Michael G. Gotch Sr., U.S. Magistrate Judge of the United States District of Northern Indiana.
Thank you. Petitioners?
Good evening. Resolution number R-15-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council recognizing the Honorable Michael G. Gotch Sr., U.S. Magistrate Judge of the United States District of Northern Indiana. Whereas, Michael G. Gotch Sr. has served as the U.S. Magistrate Judge in the United States District Court of Northern Indiana since being selected by a panel of federal district judges in 2016. Prior to being selected, he was the Circuit Court Judge for Indiana's 60th Judicial Circuit here in St. Joseph County, being elected for two terms and appointed to fill the remainder of another term by then-Governor the late Joseph E. Kernan. And whereas Judge Gotch had a distinguished career prior to becoming both a federal and a county judge, which included serving as a Deputy Chief Prosecuting Attorney, Chief of Staff in the St. Joseph County Prosecutor's Office, Counsel for the St. Joseph Office of Family and Children, Corporate Counsel for Meridian Title Corporation, Executive Director of the Casey Center, a private law practice, and was a commissioned officer of the United States Army, reaching the rank of Captain. And whereas Judge Gotch's many honors include being named an Outstanding Judge by the Indiana Bar Association, the North Central Indiana YWCA Man of the Year, the Indiana Coalition Against Domestic Violence Outstanding Judge Award, a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Indiana Child Support Alliance, the Silver Antelope, Silver Beaver, and Soaring Eagle Awards from the LaSalle Council of the Boy Scouts of America, and...
Whereas Judge Gotch has been committed to a lifetime of service to our community for nearly 40 years, in many professional and volunteer capacities. As such, he has helped bring a record-setting millions of dollars in needed child support for thousands of St. Joseph County families during his tenure at the helm of the Prosecutor's Child Support Division. And as he advocated for us to reorganize the public defender program in our county, he has helped us secure over $13.6 million in reimbursement from the state of Indiana since the program's inception in 2007. And by serving on the Community Corrections Advisory Council Board, he helped us secure the matching funds from the state of Indiana to create the Ducom Center Work Release Facility on Lethib Drive. And whereas Judge Gotch has made many lasting impacts through his countless contributions to our legal system in St. Joseph County and throughout northern Indiana and beyond, both by deed and example, he has set a bar for others to emulate, and we, as the beneficiaries of his contributions, will reap these rewards for many generations into the future. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that Section 1, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, the St. Joseph County Council wishes to extend its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Judge Michael G. Gotch Sr. for his lifetime of service to the public, the community, and our judicial system. Section 2, the St. Joseph County Council wishes to acknowledge that Judge Michael G. Gotch Sr.'s tremendous contributions to our county and to extend many enjoyable years of retirement to him with his wife, Sarah, their children Trent, Leslie, Michael, Margaret, Matthew, and their grandchildren, Trevor, and Annalise, hopefully passed and adopted this 13th day of August 2024. If you have any questions, Mr. Morton and myself are here. We'd be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton and Mr. Katanzright. Judge Gotch, would you like to address?
I'm not sure I'm supposed to be against this resolution or in favor, but in any case, I want to express my appreciation to the council for recognizing me today. So, President Root, members of the council, members of the Board of Commissioners, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, citizens all. As I have retired from the position of United States Magistrate Judge, I know people still call me Judge, but actually, I have now the simple title of citizen. As I've mentioned many times in naturalization remarks to new citizens, that title is the only title that's greater than any other governmental position, including the President of the United States. I've never forgotten that. First and foremost, the role of any public servant is to serve the citizens of his or her community. It's hard to summarize 40 years of a career as an Army Officer, prosecutor, state judge, and then federal judge in a few words. Suffice to say that I hope I left the campground better than I found it. None of this can be done alone. With the help of numerous great people, I had the honor of accomplishing many things, some of which I am most proud of are the following: our child support division, which was the best in the nation, received two national and one state award for the efforts to collect millions of dollars to support thousands and thousands of families in our community. At one point in time, we had over 20,000 child support cases active in our office. It was a Herculean task, which I was able to accomplish with some excellent support staff. The Casey Center, as the executive director, it was called something else when I first started. We rebranded it, we reorganized it, and we refinanced the center, which is still with us today, and we introduced evidence-based, child-centric forensic interviewing to the center, which was a leading center in the nation. A civil protective order court, which we established within the St. Joseph Circuit Court, which assisted victims of domestic violence. I can explain all the things that that meant, but the simplest way to say it is, it used to take days and sometimes weeks to get a protective order through the system, and we reduced it from days and weeks to minutes. Our standard was to have a protective order issued within two hours. The last I heard, they were doing it within 45 minutes, 45 minutes of them coming, getting the order, and having a button pushed by the judge approving the order and immediately notifying law enforcement that a protective order had been issued for that individual in that place, which not only protected the person, but also the law enforcement officers that were called to enforce those orders. As mentioned, we secured the funding with Commissioner Castelny, went down and had many, many meetings downstate, but got money for the new Ducom Center, which brought a level of community corrections to our community that was never here before. The criminal courts complex that's attached to this building, four floors, two of which are courts, the other is the Court Substance Abuse Program and the Probation Office, all the criminal facilities, all within one house, which, at one point, the estimate was $18 million to build a new off-site facility, and we brought that in for about $2 million. And then JTAC and Odyssey, that's, I served on a committee downstate that brought a case management system to all the courts in the county, all the courts in the state, including St. Joseph County. You may know that if you look online, it's mycase.org. You can look up anybody's case now. That didn't exist before. All of that was county to county, and we were still working on paper and with typewriters. It's like, I was always asking the clerk, you know, can we still find parts for the typewriters? Because we're soon going to be, you know, like the proverbial buggy whip. But I could not have done this without the efforts of so many great people who were on my staff and without the support of innumerable others. However, this evening, I think it is most appropriate to shine a light on the support, both financial and otherwise, that came from the St. Joseph County Council and the St. Joseph County Commissioners. It was a true partnership, and none of the programs, projects, or facilities that I mentioned would have been successful but for the support of the commissioners and the council members. I want to thank you for honoring me tonight, but I want to thank you for your support to accomplish these monumental tasks here in St. Joseph County, to make this county better than many of the surrounding counties, and frankly, better than any county in the state of Indiana. Cemeteries are filled with indispensable people, and it's important to know when it's time to step aside and let others step up. I hope others, boomers, take my hint, but in any case, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
The resolution.
You can go if you want to go further.
Sure, I can say it. Thank you.
May I have a motion on the resolution, please?
Motion approved.
Motion to pass was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further council discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution 86-24 is passed unanimously. Congratulations, Judge Gotch.
Thank you very much.
That concludes resolutions for tonight. Next up is public hearing, public comment on all fiscal matters. All fiscal matters were heard at our July committee meeting and discussed by the council at that time, and so we will move tonight directly to a public hearing after having the clerk please read the bill.
Bill number 78-24, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. We will now move to the public hearing on bill number 78-24. I do want to note that Part C was held at the request of the petitioner, so Part C is not part of the bill tonight. We are only dealing with A, B, D, and E. And at that, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of any item in this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of any item in this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to any item in this bill? Is there anyone online? Seeing no one. The public hearing on bill number 78-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Move for passage.
Second. Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Fig. Any further council discussion on 78-24? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 78-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. That concludes our fiscal matters for tonight. Next up, I don't know, we got another one actually under there. Okay. We'll move to bill 79-24. Clerk, will you please read bill number 79-24?
An ordinance appropriating monies for the purpose herein specified for the Mishawaka Penn Harris Public Library.
Thank you. Committee report, please?
Bill number 79-24 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner?
Good evening. Resolution number R-15-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council recognizing the Honorable Michael G. Gotch Sr., U.S. Magistrate Judge of the United States District of Northern Indiana. Whereas, Michael G. Gotch Sr. has served as the U.S. Magistrate Judge in the United States District Court of Northern Indiana since being selected by a panel of federal district judges in 2016. Prior to being selected, he was the Circuit Court Judge for Indiana's 60th Judicial Circuit here in St. Joseph County, being elected for two terms and appointed to fill the remainder of another term by then-Governor the late Joseph E. Kernan. And whereas Judge Gotch had a distinguished career prior to becoming both a federal and a county judge, which included serving as a Deputy Chief Prosecuting Attorney, Chief of Staff in the St. Joseph County Prosecutor's Office, Counsel for the St. Joseph Office of Family and Children, Corporate Counsel for Meridian Title Corporation, Executive Director of the Casey Center, a private law practice, and was a commissioned officer of the United States Army, reaching the rank of Captain. And whereas Judge Gotch's many honors include being named an Outstanding Judge by the Indiana Bar Association, the North Central Indiana YWCA Man of the Year, the Indiana Coalition Against Domestic Violence Outstanding Judge Award, a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Indiana Child Support Alliance, the Silver Antelope, Silver Beaver, and Soaring Eagle Awards from the LaSalle Council of the Boy Scouts of America, and...
Whereas Judge Gotch has been committed to a lifetime of service to our community for nearly 40 years, in many professional and volunteer capacities. As such, he has helped bring a record-setting millions of dollars in needed child support for thousands of St. Joseph County families during his tenure at the helm of the Prosecutor's Child Support Division. And as he advocated for us to reorganize the public defender program in our county, he has helped us secure over $13.6 million in reimbursement from the state of Indiana since the program's inception in 2007. And by serving on the Community Corrections Advisory Council Board, he helped us secure the matching funds from the state of Indiana to create the Ducom Center Work Release Facility on Lethib Drive. And whereas Judge Gotch has made many lasting impacts through his countless contributions to our legal system in St. Joseph County and throughout northern Indiana and beyond, both by deed and example, he has set a bar for others to emulate, and we, as the beneficiaries of his contributions, will reap these rewards for many generations into the future. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that Section 1, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, the St. Joseph County Council wishes to extend its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Judge Michael G. Gotch Sr. for his lifetime of service to the public, the community, and our judicial system. Section 2, the St. Joseph County Council wishes to acknowledge that Judge Michael G. Gotch Sr.'s tremendous contributions to our county and to extend many enjoyable years of retirement to him with his wife, Sarah, their children Trent, Leslie, Michael, Margaret, Matthew, and their grandchildren, Trevor, and Annalise, hopefully passed and adopted this 13th day of August 2024. If you have any questions, Mr. Morton and myself are here. We'd be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton and Mr. Katanzright. Judge Gotch, would you like to address?
I'm not sure I'm supposed to be against this resolution or in favor, but in any case, I want to express my appreciation to the council for recognizing me today. So, President Root, members of the council, members of the Board of Commissioners, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, citizens all. As I have retired from the position of United States Magistrate Judge, I know people still call me Judge, but actually, I have now the simple title of citizen. As I've mentioned many times in naturalization remarks to new citizens, that title is the only title that's greater than any other governmental position, including the President of the United States. I've never forgotten that. First and foremost, the role of any public servant is to serve the citizens of his or her community. It's hard to summarize 40 years of a career as an Army Officer, prosecutor, state judge, and then federal judge in a few words. Suffice to say that I hope I left the campground better than I found it. None of this can be done alone. With the help of numerous great people, I had the honor of accomplishing many things, some of which I am most proud of are the following: our child support division, which was the best in the nation, received two national and one state award for the efforts to collect millions of dollars to support thousands and thousands of families in our community. At one point in time, we had over 20,000 child support cases active in our office. It was a Herculean task, which I was able to accomplish with some excellent support staff. The Casey Center, as the executive director, it was called something else when I first started. We rebranded it, we reorganized it, and we refinanced the center, which is still with us today, and we introduced evidence-based, child-centric forensic interviewing to the center, which was a leading center in the nation. A civil protective order court, which we established within the St. Joseph Circuit Court, which assisted victims of domestic violence. I can explain all the things that that meant, but the simplest way to say it is, it used to take days and sometimes weeks to get a protective order through the system, and we reduced it from days and weeks to minutes. Our standard was to have a protective order issued within two hours. The last I heard, they were doing it within 45 minutes, 45 minutes of them coming, getting the order, and having a button pushed by the judge approving the order and immediately notifying law enforcement that a protective order had been issued for that individual in that place, which not only protected the person, but also the law enforcement officers that were called to enforce those orders. As mentioned, we secured the funding with Commissioner Castelny, went down and had many, many meetings downstate, but got money for the new Ducom Center, which brought a level of community corrections to our community that was never here before. The criminal courts complex that's attached to this building, four floors, two of which are courts, the other is the Court Substance Abuse Program and the probation office, all the criminal facilities, all within one house, which, at one point, the estimate was $18 million to build a new off-site facility, and we brought that in for about $2 million. And then JTAC and Odyssey, that's, I served on a committee downstate that brought a case management system to all the courts in the county, all the courts in the state, including St. Joseph County. You may know that if you look online, it's mycase.org. You can look up anybody's case now. That didn't exist before. All of that was county to county, and we were still working on paper and with typewriters. It's like, I was always asking the clerk, you know, can we still find parts for the typewriters? Because we're soon going to be, you know, like the proverbial buggy whip. But I could not have done this without the efforts of so many great people who were on my staff and without the support of innumerable others. However, this evening, I think it is most appropriate to shine a light on the support, both financial and otherwise, that came from the St. Joseph County Council and the St. Joseph County Commissioners. It was a true partnership, and none of the programs, projects, or facilities that I mentioned would have been successful but for the support of the commissioners and the council members. I want to thank you for honoring me tonight, but I want to thank you for your support to accomplish these monumental tasks here in St. Joseph County, to make this county better than many of the surrounding counties, and frankly, better than any county in the state of Indiana. Cemeteries are filled with indispensable people, and it's important to know when it's time to step aside and let others step up. I hope others, boomers, take my hint, but in any case, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
The resolution.
You can go if you want to go further.
Sure, I can say it. Thank you.
Right.
Thanks for seeing you.
May I have a motion on the resolution, please?
Motion approved.
Motion to pass was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further council discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution 86-24 is passed unanimously. Congratulations, Judge Gotch.
Thank you very much.
That concludes resolutions for tonight. Next up is public hearing, public comment on all fiscal matters. All fiscal matters were heard at our July committee meeting and discussed by the council at that time, and so we will move tonight directly to a public hearing after having the clerk please read the bill.
Bill number 78-24, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. We will now move to the public hearing on bill number 78-24. I do want to note that Part C was held at the request of the petitioner, so Part C is not part of the bill tonight. We are only dealing with A, B, D, and E. And at that, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of any item in this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition to any item in this bill? Is there anyone online? Seeing no one. The public hearing on bill number 78-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Move for passage.
Second. Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Mr. Fig. Any further council discussion on 78-24? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 79-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Now, that concludes fiscal matters for tonight. Next up is land use planning.
Bill number 75-24, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended, for property located at 53522 Timothy Road, from a agricultural district to a agricultural district and C Commercial District. Petitioner, Wykoff Family Farm LLC.
Committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number 75-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Good evening. This is Carl Brown Grimm, Area Plan Commission staff. Should have that PowerPoint up soon. So, the subject property tonight is a 72-acre field directly north of the town of New Carlisle. The petitioner is looking to rezone approximately eight of those acres to C Commercial District for a proposed self-storage use. As I mentioned in committee, the petitioners were originally going to develop this self-storage facility on the abutting parcel to the south that's within town limits. Just last year, in early 2023, the petitioners, the property owners filed a petition to do so. However, after further discussion with the town of New Carlisle, the petitioner withdrew the original proposal and has brought forward the new plan that is seen here. Essentially, the previously proposed self-storage project has been moved to another property owned by the petitioner north, tucked behind the existing event auction center use, with an easement allowing access to the project from Marvel Lane. There's the site and the access. Both the petitioner and the town have indicated that this layout represents a compromise, in that the self-storage use is situated in a location that's more favorable to the town, away from the right-of-way, sort of, and the previous property can be developed more in line with the long-term vision that the town has for that area, sort of a gateway into New Carlisle. Here is the property currently being used as a tilled field. Again, the whole property is not being proposed to go commercial. It's just that portion, sort of behind the auction house, you can see behind the trees there. This is looking from the closest right-of-way, Timothy Road. There are some houses found south of Marvel Lane, which is kind of in the right of the picture, but again, they will be screened from the proposed use by that auction house and the existing landscaping there today. Here's the north portion of the same field. This part will, as it is today, will remain as a tilled farm field. Here's the proposed site plan again. I will note, the petitioners will need to demonstrate that they can meet the county requirements for drainage at the plan review stage. This area is sort of known as a trouble issue with water table and drainage issues. Turning to our criteria to consider with rezonings, we do find that the rezoning is supported by both the town and the county's comprehensive plan, and again, the use is appropriate in that location due to the existing event and auction center there, located immediately to the south. Last month, the Area Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward this to you with a favorable recommendation. At the hearing, one member of the public did speak in favor of the petition, praising the compromise between the town and the developer, as well as the final design aesthetic of the project. And there was one member of the public who spoke in remonstrance, who voiced concerns regarding urban sprawl. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council for area plan? Hearing none. Is the petitioner here? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. George Lepiniotis, attorney with Creek Devault, address is 4101 Edison Lakes Parkway, Mishawaka. On here, I am here on behalf of Veldkoff Farms. I am joined tonight by Todd Veldman and Jason Wykoff. Both are local residents. Jason lives just north of this site and is a well-known farmer in the area, and Todd Veldman runs the All Secure Self-Storage brand, which many of you may have in your own neighborhoods. That is the facility that is being proposed for this site. I mention that because there is an All Secure location on University Drive, that this self-storage facility would be modeled after. It is a higher-end product. It does not include any outdoor storage. Lighting is kept to a minimum. There are a multitude of safety features and other distinct parts of their operation that make them a high-end operator of units. As APC told you, this is a compromise between the town. The town recently enacted its comp plan that involves that northern corridor into town being a growth target area for mixed-use development, and they felt that the corner of Marvel Lane could use better options. And so, moving the self-storage off of that site plan and onto the northern parcel, as we call it, disguises it, it hides it from view of the residences that are already there, and creates, or at least maintains, the opportunity for that corner of Marvel Lane to be more further developed. You know, we have spoken with the town, who made it through town committee yesterday. There will be some commitments on the town parcel, and there is an expectation that this northern parcel may become annexed as town utilities are offered to it. But other than that, I think they are on board with the plan, and this is largely due to compromise for the town. As was mentioned, at the APC, there was concerns about drainage that were brought up. Deborah Hughes is a professional engineer being hired by my clients to ensure that drainage is not only done to the standard but above and beyond the standard, given the knowledge of the water table in that area. It is a conducive use to a high water table. There are no basements. There are no living conditions. It is, you know, slab-on-grade type construction. So, we do feel that that is a priority and will be addressed, as you can tell, in the site plan with adequate onsite drainage. There is no plan to take drainage off-site at this time. With that, I can take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on bill number 75-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one. The public hearing on bill number 74-24 is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Is there any further council discussion on 75-24? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 79-24 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. Now, that concludes fiscal matters for tonight. Next up is land use planning.
Bill number 75-24, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended, for property located at 53522 Timothy Road, from a agricultural district to a agricultural district and C Commercial District. Petitioner, Wykoff Family Farm LLC.
Committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number 75-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Good evening. This is Carl Brown Grimm, Area Plan Commission staff. Should have that PowerPoint up soon. So, the subject property tonight is a 72-acre field directly north of the town of New Carlisle. The petitioner is looking to rezone approximately eight of those acres to C Commercial District for a proposed self-storage use. As I mentioned in committee, the petitioners were originally going to develop this self-storage facility on the abutting parcel to the south that's within town limits. Just last year, in early 2023, the petitioners, the property owners filed a petition to do so. However, after further discussion with the town of New Carlisle, the petitioner withdrew the original proposal Now, that concludes fiscal matters for tonight. Next up is land use planning.
Bill number seventy-five dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title fifteen, Land Usage, Chapter one fifty-four, Planning and Zoning of the Saint Joseph County Code as amended for property located at five-three-five-two-two Timothy Road from A Agricultural District to A Agricultural District and C Commercial District. Petitioner, Wykoff Family Farm LLC.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Bill number seventy-five dash twenty-four comes through the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Good evening. This is Carl Brown-Grimm, Area Plan Commission staff. Should have a PowerPoint up soon. So, the subject property tonight is a seventy-two acre field directly north of the town of New Carlyle. The petitioner is looking to rezone approximately eight of those acres for, to see Commercial District for a proposed self-storage use. As I mentioned in committee, the petitioners were originally going to develop the self-storage facility on the abutting parcel to the south. That's within town limits. Just last year, in early twenty-twenty-three, the petitioners, the property owners filed a petition to do so. However, after further discussion with the town of New Carlyle, the petitioner withdrew the original proposal and has brought forward the new plan that is seen here. Essentially, the previously proposed self-storage project has been moved to another property owned by the petitioner north, tucked behind the existing event auction center use, with an easement allowing access to the project from Marvel Lane. There's the site and the access. Both the petitioner and the town have indicated that this layout represents a compromise in that the self-storage use is situated in a location that's more favorable to the town, away from the right-of-way, sort of. And the previous property can be developed more in line with the long-term vision that the town has for that area, sort of a gateway into New Carlyle. Here is a property currently being used as a tilled field. Again, the whole property is not being proposed to go commercial. It's just that portion, sort of behind the auction house, you can see behind the trees there. This is looking from the closest right-of-way, Timothy Road. There are some houses found south of Marvel Lane, which is kind of in the right of the picture. But again, they will be screened from the proposed use by that auction house and the existing landscaping there today. Here's the north portion of the same field. This part will, as it is today, will remain as a tilled farm field. Here's a proposed site plan again. I will note, the petitioners will need to demonstrate that they can meet the county requirements for drainage at the plan review stage. This area is sort of known as a trouble issue with water table and drainage issues. Turning to our criteria to consider with rezonings, we do find that the rezoning is supported by both the town and the county's comprehensive plan. And again, the use is appropriate in that location due to the existing event and auction center there, located immediately to the south. Last month, the Area Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward this to you with a favorable recommendation. At the hearing, one member of the public did speak in favor of the petition, praising the compromise between the town and the developer, as well as the final design aesthetic of the project. And there was one member of the public who spoke in remonstrance, who voiced concerns regarding urban sprawl. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council for area plan? Hearing none. Is the petitioner here? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. George Lepiniotis, attorney with Creek-Davault, address is forty-one oh one Edison Lakes Parkway. Mishawaka, on here, I am here on behalf of Veldkoff Farms. I am joined tonight by Todd Veldman and Jason Wykoff. Both are local residents. Jason lives just north of this site and is a well-known farmer in the area. And Todd Veldman runs the AllSecure Self-Storage brand, which many of you may have in your own neighborhoods. That is the facility that is being proposed for this site. I mention that because there is a AllSecure location on University Drive that this self-storage facility would be modeled after. It is a higher-end product. It does not include any outdoor storage. Lighting is kept to a minimum. There are a multitude of safety features and other distinct parts of their operation that make them a high-end operator of units. As APC told you, this is a compromise between the town. The town recently enacted its comp plan that involves that northern corridor into town being a growth target area for mixed-use development. And they felt that the corner of Marvel Lane could use better options. And so, moving the self-storage off of that site plan and onto the northern parcel, as we call it, disguises it, it hides it from view of the residences that are already there and creates, or at least maintains, the opportunity for that corner of Marvel Lane to be more further developed. You know, we have spoken with the town, who made it through town committee yesterday. There will be some commitments on the town parcel. And there is an expectation that this northern parcel may become annexed as town utilities are offered to it. But other than that, I think they are on board with the plan, and this is largely due to compromise for the town. As was mentioned, at the APC, there was concerns about drainage that were brought up. Deborah Hughes is a professional engineer being hired by my clients to ensure that drainage is not only done to the standard, but above and beyond the standard, given the knowledge of the water table in that area. It is a conducive use to a high-water table. There are no basements. There are no living conditions. It is, you know, slab-on-grade type construction. So, we do feel that that is a priority and will be addressed, as you can tell, in the site plan with adequate onsite drainage. There is no plan to take drainage off-site at this time. With that, I can take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill number seventy-five dash twenty-four. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Online? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number seventy-four, seventy-five dash twenty-four is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved was made by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Is there any further counsel discussion on seventy-five twenty-four? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number seventy-five dash twenty-four was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next up is sixty-four twenty-four.
Bill number sixty-four dash twenty-four, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number R eleven dash twenty-four of the Saint Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming. Petitioner, Amazon Data Services, Inc.
Committee report, please. Oh, this is a resolution. Okay. Petitioner?
Mr. President, members of the council, Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director with Saint Joseph County, part of Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the seventh-eleven floor. There are four items here before you tonight. I didn't know if you wanted one single presentation or four separate presentations prepared to do either.
What's the council's preference?
One.
One?
One. Fantastic. Well, that makes it easier for me, too. Thank you very much. Four items before you today, and we'll, all of these kind of telescope into the next item, so we'll start with the confirming resolution. Before you tonight is confirming resolution for the real property tax abatement. This is Bill number sixty-four dash twenty-four. This is the fourth step in the process. We've been to committee, then we went to the public hearing for the declaratory resolution. We did committee hearing back in June, and now we're back here for the final hearing today. The abatement request largely is based on the eleven billion dollar investment being proposed by Amazon Data Services. This is, the proposal is a fifty percent abatement for ten years on the data shells only. So, support buildings, other buildings would not receive this real property abatement. No personal property abatement is being requested. The next item, or a couple items later, relates to the enterprise technology exemption. All of the paperwork, including the SB one, was filed back in April and May. And again, what we're seeking to do is ask for real property abatement on IEC Site Two, which is north of the General Motors site, generally located at the southwest corner of Larison and Edison. And then, IEC Site Three and Four, which is generally located south of State Road Two in the southwest quadrant of State Road Two and Strawberry Road. The red line on the map represents a high-pressure gas line that separates Site Three and Four. When we did the declaratory resolution, that established the economic revitalization area. That was for Areas Two, Three, and Four. Those are the maps we just previously looked at. And we set a term of years for the ERA of fifty years. That's really the long side of how long this project could develop, but we wanted to be conservative, make sure that we had all of the potential construction covered in this ERA. What we're before you today doing is asking for a confirming resolution to establish the percentage of fifty percent of real property abatement for a ten-year period. We've done, again, this is IEC Site Two. The proposal right now is the potential up to seven data shells with two potential that could be added. This site's about two-hundred-and-thirty acres in size. IEC Site Three and Four is largely six-hundred-and-forty acres. Potential to add nine data shell center, or nine data center shells on the northern half of IEC Site Three. So, that's where we would look to do development. For purposes, largely for purposes of this presentation today, we're going to talk about sixteen data shells, seven on the top, nine on the bottom, so sixteen. What we'd like to do is first give you a little math, maybe before we start the whole process. And so, when we talk about IEC Site Two, what we did is we looked at the tax bills for IEC Site Two. Right now pays about ninety-five hundred dollars in property taxes. So, if you extrapolated that out over thirty-five years, that would generate about three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars in property taxes, assuming that there were no major changes in state ag, it, you know, kept the buildings ahead on site. IEC Site Three and Four pays a lot more. It's a bigger site, pays about twenty-five thousand a year. Again, extrapolating that out thirty-five years, that generates about eight-hundred-eighty-eight thousand dollars for a total of one-point-two million dollars a year, or one-point-two million dollars for thirty-five years between the two sites. So, that would be the value over thirty-five years. We tried to make it a little more complicated, and I want to thank Steve Francis. Steve really kind of pushed us to look at some numbers today, really tried to figure out the best way to show these. So, this is kind of a revised data shell math table, if you will. So, based on the SB one, a data shell would pay approximately two-point-three million dollars in property taxes a year. So, we've kept that as a constant number across the mix. And so, the top line there is no abatement offered. So, at two-point-three million for thirty-five years, at sixteen shells, that would generate one-point-two-eight-eight billion dollars of revenue. What we're proposing, though, is a fifty percent abatement per shell for ten years. So, at half the value for the first ten years, that would be one-point-one million. Times ten years, at sixteen shells, would generate a hundred-and-eighty-four million dollars a year, a hundred-and-eighty-four million. And if we flip back to the slide before, this generates one million dollars over thirty-five years. So, tremendous value increase, just in the ten-year value, if you will. The real property after the ten-year abatement has worn off, so two-point-three million times twenty-five times sixteen shells would net ninety-two, or nine-hundred-and-twenty million dollars for a rough total, again, assuming all costs stayed the same over thirty-five years, of one-point-one billion dollars of taxes that would be paid on these shells. So, when we look at the value of the abatement to ADS, we're looking at about a hundred-and-eighty-four million dollars of savings over that period of time, but at the same point in time, payment to the county over that same period of time. So, one-point-one billion dollars of investment just on real property. Now, personal property, there's no abatement request being asked to that. And based on the SB one, there's an estimate that five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars would be the abatement payment, or would be the regular personal property payment. Again, not abated, thirty-five years, sixteen shells, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine million dollars that would bring in. So, if we were to ask for the abatement and you were to approve the abatement for a ten-year period at fifty percent, that would generate, again, one-point-one billion plus three-hundred-and-twenty-nine million, would generate about a one-point-four-three billion dollars of new investment to the county just in real and personal property taxes alone. Again, this is estimated value based on the SB one forms. I would note that the real property and personal property numbers don't include support buildings. So, we know that there could be as many as four support buildings on each site, much smaller buildings, but still additional value of real property and personal property that would add to that one-point-four-billion-dollar number. So, that's the confirming resolution. And so, if you approve that tonight, the next thing we would ask you to do is approve a memorandum of agreement. Based on the county code and the tax abatement ordinance, for tax abatements, there's a requirement that a memorandum of agreement be approved. That memorandum of agreement has been approved for the GM project, was approved, I believe, for the Saint Joe Energy Center project. Generally, we use the MOA for big projects. And what it does is it just memorializes all the pieces and parts of the confirming resolution, the declaratory resolution into one document. So, there's a resolution related to that, that's Resolution eighty-three twenty-four, maybe it's listed as Bill eighty-three twenty-four on your agenda. So, what we'd do then is ask for you, after you've approved the confirming, if you approve the confirming resolution, we'd ask you to approve this. So, that's the next piece of the puzzle. Then, the enterprise information technology exemption. This relates to a resolution that's in your packet. This is a resolution of Bill number eighty-four twenty-four. And again, we've talked about the enterprise technology exemption. And again, this is an exemption on all the personal property related to the data shell itself. So, all the computers, the hardware, the network cables, the fiber, anything else that goes in to make in the data center side of the project run would qualify for this enterprise technology exemption. Proposal here is eighty-five percent for thirty-five years. And again, we've talked about kind of the sawtooth. The more investment they make on the front end, then it depreciates out, then they replace the equipment, then it depreciates out. So, we would capture fifteen percent of the investment. It's a kind of a hard number to put math to, if you will, because there's always that depreciation cycle. We've talked to Mike Castellana and just suggested he hire a bald person to do all this work, because they're going to pull their hair out trying to do all the tracking on this, because it's just going to be complicated. It's a yearly report process that's going to have to happen. So, the replacement cycles, again, are steep based on the depreciation and the replacement. But as part of the ability to get this enterprise tax exemption, you have to make a certain level of investment, and you have to do employment at a certain level. And again, we've talked about the blue badge employees, and these are the employees that are paid for, or paid by Amazon that would work for ADS or AWS. So, the proposal here is four-hundred permanent jobs. The jobs have to be a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of the average county wage. The average county wage this year is listed at twenty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents an hour. So, that a hundred-and-twenty-five percent of that would be thirty dollars and seventy-four cents. So, those would be the jobs that Amazon would be required to report yearly when they do all their tax abatement compliance reporting and all their other reporting. So, there'd be a requirement to track that. Now, the other jobs, the yellow badge employees, are all the other people that are going to work on site. They're going to do food service, or security, or maintenance, or this, or that. But they would be employees that would be contracted through third parties by Amazon. And those numbers, the state has a requirement of a thousand employees to get those incentives. So, four-hundred plus six-hundred gets you to the a thousand. And so, those, we think, are low numbers. Now, this doesn't count, again, for this exemption, those are the employees that have to be tracked and have to be monitored. But this doesn't account for all the construction workers on site and all the other people that are working on site. So, we're putting a lot of people to work as part of this project. And again, so a little bit more data shell math. So, the number that was initially reported for the enterprise technology for one shell is about eight-point-six million dollars. So, if you take the eighty-five percent exempted, that's about seven-point-three million, fifteen percent, would be one-point-two, nearly one-point-three million a year. That would be the part we would get. And again, this is a hard number to track, so we just tried to fix these numbers for purposes of this discussion. It kind of based values across the board. So, enterprise technology at sixteen shells for sixteen buildings, times thirty-five years, would generate about four-point-eight billion. Eighty-five percent exempted would generate four point, roughly four million, or four billion dollars in savings to the company. And then, would generate locally seven-hundred-and-twenty-two million for the county. But again, that number's going to fluctuate high and low on both of those numbers for both sides of the equation. The last piece of this is the economic development agreement. And assuming, or if you choose to pass the other three documents, then those documents get telescoped into this agreement. So, there's a resolution here, Bill number eighty-five dash twenty-four, and that's the economic development agreement. And again, the key elements of the development agreement, this is an agreement that has previously been signed today by the Redevelopment Commission, Board of Commissioners. You're kind of the last stop in the process. It includes all of the documents, the confirming resolution, enterprise technology exemption, the SB one documentation, and then all the reporting forms that are required as part of the reporting for this project. It also includes the community enhancement agreement that's part of this whole document structure. Community enhancement agreement was passed this morning by the Redevelopment Commission. And then, it contains all the other legal terms and conditions that are part of an agreement like this. I show this slide and the next slide just to show just the value of the project to date. This is the monthly report, monthly financial report for this year from January to July for the Building Department. To this point, this year, they've generated about one-point-two million in permit fees. Last year, they did six-hundred, or six-hundred thousand, so we're almost double the permit fees just for this year to this point. And then, well ahead of South Bend at five-hundred-and-twelve thousand, or five-hundred-and-twelve, yeah, five-hundred-and-twelve thousand. The estimated value of those permits to this point, one-point-one billion of investment. Last year, we were at three-hundred-and-twenty-four million at the same point in time. So, just as a, kind of to shine a light just on where we are, just with this point in the project, tremendous amount of investment coming into the community just through the permit side of things. Again, a little bit of data shell math, again, kind of the summary, if you will. So, the real property, we talked about the real property with no abatement would generate about one-point-two billion. Real property with the abatements, ten years, would, again, as that works through, is it one-point-one billion? Personal property adds another three-hundred-and-twenty-nine million to the mix. So, the real property at abatement, personal property added in is about one-point-four billion dollars of investment. And again, these are kind of fixed numbers. Again, we add the enterprise technology numbers to those. We just, we kind of walk through those. So, the investment there. And so, then, if you take all those numbers together, and this is the slide that probably scares me the most of all of them, because if you know anything about my math skills, thank goodness for Terry O'Brien and Phil Garrett helping me with the math. So, real property plus personal property, one-point-four million. You throw in the enterprise technology at fifteen percent, it's seven-hundred-and-twenty-two million. Hundred-and-forty-three million is the estimated value of the community enhancement agreement. So, the total value to the county of this project at this point in time, based on the numbers submitted to this point, two-point-two billion dollars. The real property abatement, a hundred-and-eighty-four million. Enterprise technology exemption at four billion. And then, the total abatement and the exception, exemption together, about four-point-two billion dollars of total savings to the company. But when you look at that, when you take the plus, and then you minus that against the savings, about one-point-nine billion to the company. And if you look at the one-point-nine billion to the company versus the two-point-two billion to the county, we're ahead. We're ahead on the numbers. And it's been checked by people other than me. Again, I just want to be clear on that. Or, we could not do the project and collect over the next thirty-five years a total of one million dollars, or a little more than one million dollars. So, we think, based on these numbers alone, the numbers are well ahead and put us in a good position. Question was asked about state incentives. This is a slide about what the state did from their incentive piece. Their numbers are, again, based off of jobs actually created and the performance. So, there are performance-measured grants and credits. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill?
Yes.
Thanks for breaking down the math for us. One of the components that I don't think got captured in this, difficult to, you noted the number of employees that are mandatory to fulfill their obligation. You mentioned the average income, hourly salary that's required at that hundred-and-twenty-five percent of the median. We're talking about a minimum of four-hundred of those just within the direct Amazon employee pool, aside from their third-party employee pool. And again, I do this math because a lot of this revenue is captured within the TIF. And there are some mechanisms that are required to allow for some of that funding to escape the TIF, if you will, and benefit beyond that immediate vicinity. But it strikes me that there's, over that same thirty-five-year period, with some very modest pay increase assumptions, a billion dollars of income that this is generating. And that's just for the four-hundred direct Amazon employees. And I say that because this could be a real opportunity for us to attract people to the community, not just to work, but to live, and to capture that income revenue for them within our community, for our revenue to operate and support all of the services that we provide, but also to go back into the community with that spending power to support the local businesses that we want to see here for another thirty-five years, too. So, I just wanted to more make a statement than ask a question, but I do want to follow it up with. Have, I had it and I lost it, so I apologize, but have you all considered what those additional housing policies might be from an economic development zone? I know you have, because we talked about it months and months ago, but is that being worked on behind the scenes for like a next part of our economic development for the housing side of this?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we just recently finished a four township housing study. It was Olive, Warren, German, and Green to look specifically in the area around the IEC. That housing study then really put, the numbers in it are spectacular, but really looked at what the wages would have to be, what the payments would have to be, what the rent values would have to be, or if it was a house, it was income-based, and they were looking to buy, you know, what the value of a house could be in those markets. And then, how many per the projections would be needed in any of those areas? With that study, then married with the town's new comp plan, and at some point, the county's comp plan fitting together, we really are working with the home builders. There's been presentations of the home builders, really trying to figure out where that next piece is. We know that there's a couple of projects that are being looked at. Part of the rezoning you did just prior to this was prepping area for future housing just north of New Carlyle. We know that there's a project down the road, just outside the city limits or outside the town limits, for more housing. So, we're trying to be strategic and move those next pieces ahead. Again, what's nice about this is it gives us some revenue to be able to extend utilities, make road improvements, do the things that are needed to make that happen, while also having some additional revenue to help with schools, or fire, or build trails, or those kind of things. So, yes, all those things are being considered, not just in those four townships, but also then connectivity into the city of South Bend, to Mishawaka, that whole corridor. We're working a lot with Southern Michigan and La Porte County, just trying to figure out how everybody gets to the area. The biggest failure we could have with this project, and even the GM-Samsung project, is not connecting to the communities. They're not doing a good job doing that. So, there is a lot of time being spent on that. If you guys make all the approvals tonight, it frees up some time so that we can work more intensely on that, so.
And I appreciate that explanation, because it was kind of a leading question, just to express to the community that this is a community-building project, not just an economic development project. Thank you.
Any further counsel questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill number sixty-four dash twenty-four. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to Bill sixty-four twenty-four? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Sixty-four twenty-four, eighty-three twenty-four, which one is it?
Sixty-four twenty-four.
Sixty-four twenty-four. Well, I'll just speak to the whole, yeah, I'll Well, I'll just speak to the whole, yeah, I'll speak to the whole thing. Steve Francis, Judea Lake Drive, Clay Township. I want to thank Bill for the call-out. I did make some comments earlier in the day that resulted in some additional figures that you've been provided with that I think are important. I'm just saddened that we aren't provided those figures far in advance of the final day of the final decision about giving Amazon a tax break. I do think, as a 20-year college professor, I was talking earlier in the day about teaching my students to, when they look at accounting, to look at both sides of the ledger, not just the taxes you're bringing in, but also what you're giving up, what you're not bringing in. And I think even with Bill's revision, I'm not going to be able to respond directly to that. I may do that in writing. But the 4 billion, 4.2 billion dollar in tax break to Amazon still stands. That's what it is, 4.2 billion dollars at the B. As far as my research goes, it's the largest tax break that I can find anywhere in local property taxes and exemptions. It's the largest tax break that I think Amazon has ever received. So let's start with that. Yes, it will bring in tax monies. There's no question about that. But a lot of the funds that it brings in originally go to things that Amazon benefits from, that they'll pay for, like water, sewer, the roads, construction, and so on, out in the New Carlisle area. They don't benefit general taxpayers. Additionally, let's look at, you know, when that goes away, the property tax, yes, it will bring in property taxes if they're still around and producing revenue. I agree with that. But there's still a $2 billion gap there at the end of it all. That is, Amazon gets $2 billion more than what we get in the county over the 35 or 50 years. I'm not sure what the timeframe is. And that's a problem. And it's a problem for you as elected leaders, that you aren't presented with the kind of information you need. You're presented with the percentages a month ago, 85 percent for the exemption, 50 percent for the property tax, but you aren't presented with the numbers, with the figures. And 4.2 billion in a property tax exemption for the sixth-largest corporation on the planet is a tremendous sum, while current residents in the state of, in the county, in St. Joe County, have seen their tax bills double and triple. I can see the campaign literature now. County Council grants tax breaks of 4 billion to Amazon, and while residents in the county receive tax increases of two to three times on their tax bills in the last four years. Now, maybe that'll be ameliorated in the future. I want to turn to jobs. Jobs are pathetic in this. 400 jobs, I'm not going to sneer at that. Those are good jobs at fairly good wages. But there's no job requirement associated with the property tax abatement, the 10-year property tax abatement. Why not? Why don't you ask for that? There's no job, I can't see that.
Your time is up, Mr. Francis, but you will get a chance on the next bill.
Oh, I can talk more?
Yep, you can talk some more.
Well, I wish I would have known that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition in the room? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Mary, go ahead, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to address the council. Mary?
Mary Countryman, 529-59, Timothy Road, New Carlisle. As I mentioned this morning on one of the meetings, whenever the IEC is mentioned, it's whatever they want, whatever they get. And it's frustrating, as I read the IDEM notices, I read those regularly, and there's one that says, that's popping up, and it's talking about the unifrax, and they haven't, they applied for their permit, although they've already started the building of it. And it reminds me of the situation with the concrete plant. And they just had their tenant move in, and then they changed things for them. And it concerns me with the water issues that we may have, that we may be lacking in water, because we all know that's why, that's why Amazon is here. It's for the water. They want our water. But there has been a lack of respect for procedures in place, and there's just so many of us that have not been accepting of the IEC, and with all these tax abatements being allowed, while we see the property tax sale list that's published for St. Joe County. This is another slap in the face for us, when these billion, billion-dollar corporations get these big breaks. And I'm curious about the Yellow Badge. What is the salary range for the Yellow Badge employees? And I see, once again, we have the quote "average wage" unquote, and it reminds me of the GM Battery Plant conversations of trying to get an actual number of employees, and how much each of those employees are going to be starting at. As we eventually learned, after asking repeatedly, we finally learned with GM, when that big number of average wages was thrown out there, that the majority of the people were going to be starting at 16-something an hour, and they had to work a year at those wages before they could even have the union come in for a vote. So I would like some numbers clarified for the number of jobs and at what wages and what requirements. And I would find it very hard to believe, with all the numbers that have been thrown around in this shell game presentation tonight, I would find it very hard to believe that somebody doesn't know those numbers of how many employees at what wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 64-24 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to pass favorably.
Mr. Tannen?
Point of order. Is there a chance for rebuttal?
Oh, yeah. Bill, do you want a chance to rebut anything that was said in opposition? No? Do we have a motion?
Motion to pass favorably.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Shetzel, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion on 64-24? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
No.
Bill passes 7-2.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 64-24 was passed by a vote of 7 to 2. That concludes our land use planning. Any unfinished business? Next up is new business. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 83-24?
Bill Number 83-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council authorizing memorandum of agreement between the St. Joseph County Council and Amazon Data Services, Inc.
Petitioner, want to just give us a one-sentence synopsis of what this one is?
Yes, sir. Because you just approved the Confirming Resolution, MOA, the memorandum of agreement, just solidifies all the terms, conditions within the Confirming Resolution.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open on public hearing on Bill Number 83-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Come forward, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Steve Francis, Judea Lake Drive, Clay Township. I'm not going to do this on all three, don't worry. I don't want to ingratiate myself with the council. But I do want to follow up on the jobs part. 400 jobs, direct jobs, permanent jobs, is a lot of jobs, and at good wages. However, for an $11 billion investment in the size of abatement of 2 billion net, it's not. I mean, that's $5 million per job. And there's no requirement in the property tax, the 10-year property tax portion, of a job requirement. So you have nothing that you can do to measure the abatement against, as you do in almost every tax abatement I've seen. There's been a job associated with the property tax abatement. Did any of you question that? Why not? On the enterprise, on the enterprise, I don't want to get up again, so I'm going to talk about the enterprise agreement. There is 400 jobs, but there's no requirement that I know of a local content, local component of that, is there? I'd like an answer to that. I know that the construction jobs, they've moved so fast, there's very few local jobs being hired at this point, because they're already, have constructed half the buildings that they plan to put in the north site, or they're halfway done. So there's, you know, where is the local content? Where is the requirement that, that'll be 35 years before you'll be able to assess whether they have achieved 400 jobs at $5 million per job on their abatement. You won't be around, I won't be around. Hopefully, a council will be around to see if they produce those 400 jobs. I suspect they will. It's not a hard job, really hard to achieve. So I thank you. There's other things that I think should have been in this agreement, such as utilities and solar with the Amazon project. Utility rates will be increased as a result of this project to those of us in the INM area, but that's not your bailiwick. And in far as water, we do have concerns about the efficient use of water out there on the, in the Amazon site, and I hope that you will consider an overlay that forces Amazon to use the water wisely, actually have a net-zero water policy, as they intend to do at other sites around the country. So thank you very much. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 83-24 is now closed. Mr. Shalio, do you want to respond to anything?
Maybe just a couple of quick points. So again, the 400 jobs to qualify for the enterprise technology exemption, the job, it's a two-part test. It's, the first test is X amount of investment. Second test is the wages over and above the community, average community wage. So the floor for wages is $30.74, not the average wage, so I just want to make that clear. Because there is a job tracker as part of the enterprise technology exemption, we did not put one into the property tax side of the equation. Jobs will be tracked in that, that area. So, and again, required yearly reporting on that. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Yes, ma'am?
Mary asked a question about the Yellow Badge jobs. Do those also have to meet that wage?
So they don't, because those are jobs that aren't tracked by this agreement. Only, only the jobs within the Blue Badge category are those that are part of the enterprise technology exemption, are the ones that are tracked. The yellow jobs could be a varied scale of wage, pay wages.
Thank you. And then I just had one other question about, if you could speak to the water issue.
Oh, absolutely. I love water, and if I can't answer the question, Jared Haas from Lawson Fisher Town Engineers here, and he'll be happy to correct me. So one of the things we try to do is be very proactive with water in the IEC. From the day we started back in 2017, water has been one of the, water, aquifer protection, all those kind of things are a huge part of this project. As we look at this project, we have a project area, there's two water treatment plants. There's the Cleveland Cliffs-Tech and Co water treatment plant that was built nearly 30 years ago. It produces a variety of type of water, but generally serves the town, Cliffs-Tech and Co, and the other industrial users out in the IEC area. The St. Joe Energy Center Water Treatment Plant, which is where we're spending most of our time with water upgrades and water improvements, was originally built as a non- potable water treatment plant, so meaning that it was water that you couldn't drink. And so it wasn't, it wasn't water that could be distributed to residential projects or other commercial projects to be used as bathroom water or other water on site, blue water on site. The Energy Center, St. Joe Energy Center Water Treatment Plant, right now produces 6 million gallons of water a day. We're going through two improvements to increase that capacity. But between the two water treatment plants, we've set a limit based on a tremendous amount of data that's been collected by Peerless Midwest over a number of years, to set a limit of 24 million gallons a day of water that can be used in the IEC. Right now, between the two water treatment plants, we don't estimate at full buildout of everything. GM, GM Phase 2, these two projects, suppliers coming to the area, a large buildout in the town area, we don't estimate that will generate usage of more than 21 million gallons of water a day. So 21 million gallons, but a cap at 24 million gallons a day. So we got 3 million gallons a day of safe yield from our water treatment plants. On top of that, the aquifer itself, the bigger aquifer, generates about 44 million gallons, 44 to 48 million gallons of water a day. Let's use 44. So we've set 24 as a limit. 44 million gallons is what the aquifer recharges to on a daily, daily basis. And that's the average recharge. So when it's wetter, it generates more water. When it's not as wet, it generates a little less, but the average is 44 million. So 24, 44, we're using 21 at the max capacity. So that's 20 plus 3 of safe yield that we're setting aside, not using. So very responsible water plan, we've seen in other parts of the state, where water is being proposed to be transported from one community to another community, to a third community. We're not looking to do that here. We're looking to set safe limits on the water. It's going to be protected. As part of the Community Enhancement Agreement, there's a requirement that there's water monitoring on each of the sites, both on the north end and south end of the sites, on all three of the sites, so that, again, we can collect all that empirical data, not only on water quality, but on water depth and aquifer conditions, things like that, so that, again, we can continue to monitor the treatment and the location of the water, and to preserve and protect the water, so.
Thank you.
I think I answered the question. I kind of went around.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was a great answer in response to the aquifer itself, but one of the other comments was about the utility rates, and they would receive a benefit of the buildout of all of this and whatnot. But the Community Enhancement Agreement, and one of the remaining three votes that we have to take incorporates that, actually involves Amazon paying a substantial amount of, not just cash, but just to cover the cost of buildout of water, sewer. They've got a separate agreement that I believe is in the works with AEP, Indiana-Michigan Power, to build out the facility that's necessary, or any capacity that's necessary for power. But for water and sewer, which we have some oversight on, they're covering the substantial cost of that, if not all the cost of that, but then, once they become a user of it, they're a ratepayer, paying for the maintenance and ongoing support of their need of that infrastructure. Correct?
Correct. And I will say that the number is 114 million of investment in water and sewer improvements in the area. That'll include improvements, I would disagree a little bit, that it's improvements only for Amazon. It will benefit the larger region, also allow for additional development. Navistar, for example, who hasn't ever had the ability to have water and sewer, Bendix Woods, that hasn't had the ability to have water and sewer, can benefit from this water and sewer expansion projects, but also additional expansion around the town and the area. We're great partnership with South Bend, great partnership with the town of New Carlisle, as we manage both sewer and water in that area. We, the county, don't manage either. We build it, we turn it over to them, they own it. And then assess rates and rate structures, things like that. The town is part of a separate agreement, kind of the sub-agreement to the water and sewer agreement, is in the process of creating a depreciation fund, so for years, they haven't had that. So when you build it, you got to be able to pay for it long-term, and how do you maintain it, and how do you manage it, things like that. So the town has really stepped up to the plate as far as its management side of the utilities, of the water utilities. So there's a lot of positives, in addition to having a company come in and offer to pay 114 million for the improvements. So between that and the improvements with GM, which are roughly 50 million, I mean, we're looking at a substantial increase of investment in the utility networks in that area, so. I can, that's the water side. There is a representative here from AEP, and I don't want to just throw Mona under the bus, but I'm sure she could address any of the AEP questions, if there's any utility electric questions specifically.
Mr. Tannen?
I would like to have those questions answered, because it was alleged that ratepayers are going to foot the bill for this. Can AEP address that?
Good evening. I'm Mona Livingston, and I'm the External Affairs Manager for Indiana-Michigan Power, and my address is 2929 Lethrop Street in South Bend. And the question, if I'm understanding correctly, is that the current ratepayer of the citizens are going to have to foot the bill for additional infrastructure to accommodate Amazon? Is that correct?
That's what's been alleged.
Yes, so, thank you for the question, and that is absolutely not the case. We currently have the capacity to serve all our existing customers, industrial customers, residential customers, and we are treating this separately. We will definitely, we are making significant enhancements to the transmission lines to accommodate additional loads, and also working with Amazon to purchase more power, because currently, we only have, in Indiana, you can only have so much generation capacity that you need, and maybe a little bit of buffer. We are not at the liberty of just having excess capacity sitting around. So this is some generation that is going to have to be built eventually, and it's going to take a few years to get there. So meanwhile, we're going to go to the wholesale market and purchase the power from the market for them, till we get generation in place to meet their need. And additional measures have been taken to make sure that this is not going to lead to any kind of outages or rolling brownouts, which are some of the concerns that were shared with us. So that should not be the case at all. We have additional capacity to even accommodate current businesses or new additional businesses that would be interested in coming into the market, and not be impacted by the data center's load.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any further questions, Mr. Thomas?
Um, can you, the question, some of the questions I have got about the power, the stability of the power, I know you just said no rolling brownouts. Without getting in the weeds, does it stable the grid more? That's what I've talked, that's what I've heard from, from some of the other Amazon And, and going forward, do you feel the need, I mean, is it going to be critical? I mean, I, I think that's the concerns I hear going forward. Is there going to be enough power?
Yes, so we will be purchasing additional power. We will eventually, the goal is to have additional generation at INM, but it takes time to build generation plants or capacity. And so till we get that in place, we will be purchasing power from the wholesale market for Amazon and other data centers, for these mega loads.
So you can obviously anticipate the demand?
Yes.
From them?
Correct.
And from other vendors and other businesses?
And we have been working, our teams have been working with them hand in hand and understanding, like, it's going to ramp up. Their load is going to ramp up as they continue building additional pieces on their site.
The rate increases to the residential?
No, not, so rates may increase depending on other factors, but it's not because of this.
Thank you.
If you're purchasing all this additional power and eventually another, who's going to pay for that?
Amazon and other data centers or other businesses who are using that power would pay for that.
Any further questions? Is there a motion on bill number 83-24?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Tanner, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on 83-24?
Mr. Root?
Mrs. Drake?
The question for me on this project is, does it have to be incentivized in order to happen? Oftentimes, we use the but-for argument when considering abatements. Would this project not happen but for the abatement the county is offering? Personally, I think it would happen most likely anyway. In fact, it already is. Consider that Amazon already pulled eight building permits at $1.5 million each, and structures are already being erected. Consider that Amazon already got a very lucrative financial incentive package from the state to incentivize them to choose Indiana. Consider that there is an AI race underway, and there's a competition for companies in this business to build out and build quick. A recent Wall Street Journal article noted that the current risk for tech companies is investing too little in AI rather than too much. Consider that there are some unknowns with these huge data centers, just like we heard about with energy and water. And we're not going to, we're not sure yet if that will be an eventual cost to our region. Consider that some legislators now question incentives for data centers. In Georgia, for instance, the state legislature passed a bill to halt incentives because they didn't think they were paying off. That bill was eventually vetoed by the governor. Consider that we are offering a massive tax break on the technology portion of this abatement at 85% for 35 years. Not only is that an incredibly generous tax break, but it's for a long time. And in the end, we're only guaranteed 400 jobs. Consider that Amazon is a massive $2 trillion company, and some hard-working taxpayers who are seeing their property tax assessments jump are going to feel resentful to see a company of this size get a tax break when residents are paying more than they were a few years ago. So it's a gamble for us on this council, and we have to make our best judgment. Would Amazon build without the abatement we are offering tonight? Personally, I think yes, they would. Perhaps my colleagues think that the answer is no. Regardless, I think all of us are very well-intentioned in our votes tonight. We all want economic growth, but we also all want the very best deal for our county and for our taxpayers.
Any further council discussion before we vote? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll on 83-24?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kandri?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
And President Root?
No.
Bill passes 7-2.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 83-24 was passed by a vote of seven to two. Next up is 84-24. Clerk?
Bill number 84-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council for the creation of a property tax exemption for enterprise information technology equipment pursuant to IC 6-1 dot 1 dash 10 dash 44.
Mr. Shalio, quick summary?
Just in summary, this is a proposal for the enterprise technology exemption. 85% exemption for 35 years. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on bill number 84-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Mary, go ahead. You have, please give us your name and address for record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road, New Carlisle. I have a question. What happens in worst-case scenario, say that we start experiencing drought like so many states are out west, which is one of the reasons why I believe this is a bad idea to use farmland, prime farmland with a water source anyway, but you guys are going ahead with it. So what happens in worst-case scenario? What happens if we start experiencing drought? The aquifer levels start dropping? We have to, we, I'm on well water, my family is. What happens if the waters, if it starts dropping? What happens then? Does Amazon just keep on going and pumping out the water? Do they still get tax abatements? Do they just walk away from this whole thing and leave? Tell us what happens with worst-case scenario when we start going through drought. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition online? Seeing none, the public hearing on bill number 84-24 is now closed. Mr. Shalio, would you like to respond? No? May I have a motion on 84-24?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Shetzel, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion on 84-24?
Mr. Root?
Uh, Mr. Kandri?
I just want to set the record straight. It was asserted earlier that we are now just getting the figures today for the first time to look at them, and I just want to be very clear. We were giving these figures at our committee meeting, so we've had a couple of weeks to look at these, and the figures haven't changed. So we have had a chance to look at these figures. We're not just voting tonight for the first time, seeing it, it was arranged differently tonight in the way that it was presented to us, but we have, we have looked at the figures, and we've been looking at these figures for quite some time. So I just want to make the audience clear of that. Thank you.
Any further council discussion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kandri?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
No.
Bill passes 7-2.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 84-24 was passed by a vote of seven to two. Next up is 85-24.
Bill number 85-24, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council authorizing approval of an economic development agreement between the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners, the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission, and the St. Joseph County Council and Amazon Data Services, Inc.
Mr. Shalio, quick summary?
Yes, Bill Shalio, Economic Development. This agreement has been previously passed, subject, I guess, to all these, all the final pieces you've approved tonight by the Redevelopment Commission this morning and the Board of Commissioners. Again, we think this is a very complete document, a good document. I would like to just take just a brief moment. I really want to thank Phil Garrett for, for his work, Jamie O'Brien for coordinating council items, the whole AWS team, our project team. An incredible amount of work has gone into this project over the last 14 months or so. And so I would be, I wouldn't want to name names because I'm going to forget somebody, but it's, it's been a great project effort by the whole team, and, and we appreciate the time you've given us, the time Commissioners given us and others. So we just would ask for your favorable approval on the economic development agreement. Oh, and if I didn't say it, we also would want to thank the Amazon Web Service team. They've been fantastic to work with. Thanks.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? We will move to public hearing on bill 85-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Please come forward, state your name and address for record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. When I spoke on this this morning, I, I was concerned about a few things, but the, the main thing that, that concerns me about this is that the Redevelopment Commission is kind of given charge with this, what is the community enhancement money. And, and it, it was stated that that money was county money. And I want to argue that, that nobody can argue that anywhere in this county is going to be so harshly affected with a change in their lifestyle, with everything that, that is going, going to go on, that is going on right now, with just our lives just being, just torn out from under us, basically. But we knew it was coming. It wasn't a surprise. But, but I would think that this, this community enhancement fund of about $1.5 million, again, at the meeting this morning, it was said, it could be used at other things around the county. I don't, I would ask that you all advocate that any money coming from Amazon, and again, with a four billion with a B, abatement that they're getting, we said this morning, $1.5 million is peanuts, but it's, it's something. It's more than we usually get. But I would ask that, I was asking for a majority this morning. I'm saying all that money should be in building up the new, the, we're going to have the, the new people moving in that are going to be living in the housing that aren't going to have anywhere to go because we don't have the, the ball fields, we don't have the splashpads, we don't have the golf course, the pickleball courts, we don't have any recreational things over there, other than Central Park in town. And with the growth we're going to experience, that's not going to be able to handle that. And I would ask that we, we can direct all of the money, the one and a half, about one and a half million dollars, from the Community Enhancement Fund directly and only to New Carlisle and Olive Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone in the room want to speak in opposition? Anyone online want to speak in opposition? Public hearing on 85-24 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilman Kandri, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion?
Mr. Root?
Uh, Mr. Thomas?
Sorry, I want to echo what Mr. Caruso just said to my other council members. The community enhancement money is, is pretty common sense that it should stay in the Olive Township, New Carlisle area for what this gentleman just said. And I just want to echo that on our, my fellow council members to, to let the Redevelopment Commission know, it seems, excuse me, pretty common sense that that's where those funds should stay. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, any further council discussion?
President Root?
Mr. Shetzel?
I'd like to reaffirm what Councilman Thomas said, and for any of these projects, whether it be Amazon, Microsoft, in my neck of the woods, I think it's important that we show the residents of those areas, that we have their concerns in mind when it comes to the community enhancement money, and that they benefit from that money. So I would also, I would second Mr. Caruso, or third it, I guess, Mr. Caruso and Mr. Thomas's words.
Any further council discussion? Mr. Morton?
I would be remiss if I didn't echo those comments. To me, if it's, if the fund is called a community investment fund, then those funds should go to enhance that particular community, not only in this case, but in every case that we will look at in the future. So I would really encourage the Economic Development Commission to strongly consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comment? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kandri?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
No.
Bill passes 7-2.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 85-24 was passed by a vote of seven to two. Next up in new business, Mr. Dalton, we're going to go ahead and come back to what we missed earlier on the DLGF, Fiscal Body Review of Property Tax Levy Limits and Circuit Breakers. Probably not a more inopportune time to do this.
You're going to get a report here in a second, so I'll pause while you get this handed to you. This is one of those awkward requirements annually, that this report be handed to you. You're not required to do anything with this report. You're not required to vote about this report, but we need to note it in the minutes that you were given this report. And what is it? It is a report that projects, the state does this report, that projects all the property tax levies for all the property tax levying units in St. Joseph County. I think the theory would be that if you saw something that was unbelievably surprising that you could bully those smaller units into not property tax levying quite as much. I don't think that theory actually has any water, but that's, I think why somebody passed that legislation, and all we need to do now is put it in the minutes.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Mr. Dalton? Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Next up is a presentation from the Fire Territory. That was withdrawn. Okay, did not see that one. Withdrawn. Next up is a review and approval of the Energy Savings Report. May I have a motion to accept the Energy Savings Report?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Fig, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any discussion on the motion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the Energy Savings Report, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. The Energy Savings Report is approved.
I think there's a form you need to sign.
I did. I've already signed it. So, not that we were prejudging, but we figured it was going to pass. I believe we signed it, right?
We did.
Yeah. Next up is an approval of Mr. O'Brien's legal services for June 2024. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Yes.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Fig, seconded by Ms. Drake. Any further council discussion on this? Clerk, will you, hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?